One specific issue. Obviously, the grate in the back changes. They're gonna have to make construction changes to the back of the building to get the window in. Those are all doable. Those are all solvable. The big challenge is the width of the drive that goes along the north side of the building. It's only 15 feet wide. And I know the applicant has said that they're gonna put signs up and they're gonna make sure that the tenants don't park there, but there's really two things. There's really no way to guarantee at any point in time, especially when it starts snowing, you can't see all the markings, that people aren't gonna drive through there and park anyway. And the second thing is, there is still concern about people coming out of the door, stepping off the sidewalk, and getting hit by a car that might be coming through at an unreasonable speed. It's just not a wide enough lane. My recommendation on that would be, and you could probably do it through an easement, I don't know if the owner of the center owns the piece of property immediately north that aboves it, but whether they do or not, what I would recommend is that there be an access easement along the property line and the width of that lane be increased to allow for two lanes to go through there. And then you could stripe it accordingly, and then it'd be sure that you'd have safe passage around there for the drive-through lane. That's really the only issue. And it is a safety concern. It's a definite safety concern. And, you know, like I said, I know the applicant has said that they've got controls in place to keep people from parking there, but we've got ordinances in place to keep people from doing things, and they still do it. You can't always guarantee that people are gonna do the right thing. So, that is just the one condition. I mean, if they're agreeing to widen the lane and get it, where we can get two regular-sized lanes in there, to have one dedicated for the drive-through, and then one to service the building, you know, I'd change the recommendation to approval, you know, based on that. That's really, you know, the issue. Does anybody have any questions about that?
The lane, does it go some 20 feet wide?
Right now, it's 15 feet.
And what should it be?
Generally, at a minimum, you like to have two lanes that are 12 feet wide. Sometimes you can get it down to 10, but usually 12 is the standard for the drive-through lane and the bypass lane. That's the other thing, too. Most drive-throughs require that you have some kind of a bypass lane, but I don't think it's gonna back up all the way to that north drive. So, I'm not sure that you'd need a bypass lane at soon when you're going around the drive. It's just a matter of not having anything that will block.
So, if you're in the lane, you can't, like, change your mind and get out?
Not on the north side of the building, you can't. So, if you, I mean, let's say, it's not likely, but if you had 20 vehicles backed up, yeah, you'd be in that lane, you couldn't do anything unless you drove up on the grass. Or if somebody parks in that lane, you have to go up around and go on the grass. So, I think the key to this is getting another lane in there, a wider lane. And even if we had 10 and 10, you could probably live with that. So, even if you can get another five feet added onto that, that'd be like the bare minimum. It'd be ideal to have, you know, to add 12 and 12 for 24, so you have to add nine feet onto the lane. That'd be the ideal situation.
Is there a loading dock back there? It went to the loading dock?
Yes.
I drove along there a couple of times and...
It's on the corner, like, where the trash receptacle is, right on the corner of the building there.
So, that loading dock is for all of the tenants?
Yeah.
So, they're back up there, they take the sidewalk to the side doors and themselves?
Right.
That 15 feet, is that permeate up to the wall to the end of the pavement? Or is there like a three-foot barrier and then the 15 feet right now?
The width is right now, when you've got the building, and you've got a sidewalk, when you step out the building, there's a sidewalk, and then you've got 15 feet from there to the edge of the pavement.
Okay, I'm sure.
Yeah.
So, it's more like probably 17 to 18 feet from the building?
Yeah, it's a raised sidewalk. It's not like you can drive up either. So, you've got a true 15 feet of paved area, and it's basically, you know, a little bit bigger than a single lane, just by a couple of feet.
It seems the unusual standard to hold the business owner responsible for other people's potential illegal acts. Why are they responsible if other people illegally park in what's obviously marked as a drive-through?
No, that, see, the way that that building is designed, that drive is intended to provide access to the doors, the businesses there along the back. That's the, that was the original intent of, and to get around the building. That was the original intent. It was never designed to accommodate a drive-through lane. Okay, so now they have an opportunity to bring a good tenant in, to retrofit it, and I'm saying basically, that's not the, that's not a problem. You just need to make sure you have enough room, that you have two lanes there, and you can dedicate one lane and mark it just for the drive-through. So that if there should be people coming out of there, somebody should park when they're not supposed to, you're not blocking or creating an unsafe situation there.
I couldn't tell when the plans were to decide what this would be.
In the back of the building you're talking?
Right, the bottom, yeah.
That would be on the back where the drive-through would, that's where we're talking, we're in the sidewalk.
I'm talking about the west side. If you put in a, a window, also could be a...
Well, they need, and I'll let them address that. They'd either have to build it up so it reaches the edge, or they'd have to do it full on. One of the, one of the two options to do that. Which is doable. It's not, it's not, it's not an insurmountable issue. I mean, whether or not it creates issues for loading and unloading, I mean, that's up to the, that's up to the center to deal with. It's not... Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that can be done in a safe fashion. That can be striped and inked, and you can put a weight in a window back there and still not create an unsafe situation. There's enough room back there.
We only have a question on how those, with the bank, which is a corner.
Yeah.
Then they pull up to the ATM, there's this way out, they're trying to get out. But I, I don't think they've been using it that often. It doesn't seem like...
Yeah, that would probably, with striping and signage, you could deal with the separation between the two of those. But yeah, you'd have to get around, 'cause they'd pull right up there, and then you'd have to get around. So maybe you put a stop sign at the end of the building where the drive, the bank drive-through is, so they know to stop and yield to the traffic coming around them.
And I didn't see any existing one-way drive traffic signs out there.
No, they would have to add, they'd have to add those to it. No, it's a good use. It just comes down to that one lane. If that lane were, you know, 24 foot wide, we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. It'd be fine.
Any more questions? Does it currently have a one-way there now?
No, it's not designated as such.
Okay, so you're just giving one-way drive-through?
Yeah, it's not, I couldn't find it, but designated.
Oh, definitely, yeah, not yet.
I don't think too many people are going the opposite direction right now. It's kind of implied.
Another question. I don't think it would change anything. The lighting should change as the widening of the lane, right? Lighting would be light?
No, not, yeah, they shouldn't.
All right, so anyone that would like to speak in favor of Biggie Coffee?
All right, my name's Robert Garza. With Garza Ventures, also Biggie Coffee. I guess going back just a little bit, wanna throw out a date here that I've been working on trying to get a Biggie Coffee, signed with Biggie Coffee, November 11th, 2014. It's been a long two years trying to get this put together, and you guys know, there've been a few things that we've worked on that it fell through, unfortunately, and it comes down to an issue of a Biggie Coffee needing a drive-through in order to be open in Cedar Springs. Without it, it won't be open in Cedar Springs. It's that simple. It's second to none, my business, you know, so that's a pretty big cut and pay. Unfortunately, to sign this particular lease with the landlord, it was in receivership, which had been receivership for about two and a half years. They would, they would sign it, however, any of the money that goes into the building has to come out of me. So, I'm the one putting everything into the building, so anything additional will come out of our particular pockets. Again, they've reduced the rent to help that off. We've worked together in order to make that happen, because the bank was concerned about putting in, actually not selling it, which they did, and then beating out that money. So, that's why we kind of took that part over. As far as the lane on the north side, it is documented in my lease agreement that it's a one-way, and I do have copies, so I have very good copy of that. It'll be a one-way, and that there will no longer, you know, be no longer any parking law back there. You know, they've had a really nice kind of scrum of being able to park back there, but it is designed as a one-way, strictly just for through traffic, not for any parking whatsoever. All of the deliveries are to be done at the delivery dock, and then they bring it down the side, through the back, on the sidewalks, which is seven foot wide. And then you have 15 foot for your additional every payment that there's currently. One of the big concerns, again, on that north, yeah, on the north drive, drive area was allowing two cars to get by. This is the north side that we're talking about. These are two cars parked side by side still on the pavement. And I have copies of that for everybody as well, if you'd like to see that. I also do have a picture. One of the other concerns was emergency vehicles getting by. Driving down the road, I look at different areas, you know, on commercial roads as well as just back roads. I have a photo here, for instance. If I'm going down the road, and I have an emergency vehicle behind me, and I have another one coming towards me, another vehicle coming towards me, what do I do? Do I go into the woods? Do I go into the field? Or do I go to a safe area and pull off? Which we have safe areas around here to pull off, if we have emergency vehicles coming to the back. I really don't think that's gonna be an issue, quite honestly. I think people are smart enough when they see an emergency vehicle move out of the way. And so, again, I do have the photos here to look at that. Any questions that you folks might have with me right now pertaining to any of that? Again, I do have copies of the lease that show that the, who, primarily, the person that uses that area back there for parking is Jeff Svetova. The new owner of that facility is a Jeff Svetova owner. So, he's very aware of all of these stringent lease agreements that we've made, and he wants to fill the places as bad as the rest of us do. So, I guess please take that in consideration. I started on this project back in June, hoping to be open by now, prior to the festival festivities in the next couple of weeks. It's not gonna happen. So, right now, I'm actually in the process of opening. This is the slowest time of my season because of all these delays. I'm hoping we can come up with an agreement to make this pass and pass very quickly.
Can we see the pictures?
Yes, you can. Yeah, I believe it was seven foot when I measured it, roughly, three meters ago. So, that gets the full area to come out, and, you know, someone's gonna run out and continue to run through a lane. There's really nowhere for them to run other than next door, so I don't see why someone would want to run across that lane and potentially be hit. The other thing that I have as a possible issue of widening that lane, and that makes it more prominent for speeding to go through there as we widen the alley. You guys know the shorter the lanes are, slower people are gonna go through there. So, as far as I'm concerned, that's gonna be a more of a safety issue by doing it that way. As far as the access in and out the back doors, most of that should be done in the inside, in the front of the buildings. I know Baby, in particular, they have the safety violation of all the back doors for your employees and everything. So, as far as the build-out, someone had asked about taking the sidewalks. We will take just a little section out, and you have a build-out that comes out at the end of the sidewalk. So, I do have a plan actually here that I can show you.
What are you talking about?
I'm talking about that, but I do want to know, so, so it is gonna be blocked out, and it's gonna be coming out from the back of the building. We'll have the same exterior, the rear of the building, same rooftop, and it'll just extend out that seven foot, basically, maybe just a little bit more. So, the sidewalk will still continue to be behind the west side of the building as well. They're gonna have a section that will cut out, just bump out, bump out, put on the foot and stuff.
So, how would the people who are beyond that get their deliveries to their doors?
You have the laundromat at that point. That's the only one that's beyond that point. They would, they could come around through, because you have, look, the building is shaping and not shaped. You also have access in front of the buildings to take the goods out of there as well in the corner. The deliveries make them back, you can come out through here to the front, and through the front of the other building, or you can off left or out the back of the building to make your deliveries to the facility. From the loading dock. If you go into the loading dock, you can actually walk in, and you can come into a certain area, where you can just come off left or come out right. If you go out left...
Inside the building?
Yeah, this is...
What?
You have the, the loading dock there, so you can...
Yeah, but I'm just gonna go, if they, if the loading dock, and they're wheeling the stuff up the sidewalk, then...
If they don't need, you can go through and go to the front door.
Yeah, but ordinance, they do all their deliveries and stuff in the back of the building, not in the front.
Yeah, today we have, this is where the drive-through lane comes in, and then a bump out would be located over here. As you can see, this is where the delivery comes in. You can actually, the delivery can come off the sidewalks here, you can also exit, come off the sidewalk here, you can also exit, come off the front of the sidewalks as well as the front of the buildings, to get to there from the, from the loading dock. And that's where they were intended for all the loading and unloading to be taken care of, is through this particular area of loading dock, because if they do stay parked here, then I'll be blocking, I'll fix some issues there as well.
This little dirt area, where that parking lot is, how wide is that? Where your, where the drive-through is, that little dirt area beside the red truck there?
Oh, the sidewalk, I'm sorry, I missed my picture there.
Between the grass and the, I'm sorry, I'm bouncing around.
Yeah, no problem.
How wide is that little guy right there?
From where? I'm sorry, from the sidewalk here to here?
Now, where the truck is.
Where the pavement, see where you...
Yeah, my, my truck tire is on the pavement.
Okay, but how wide is that over to the grass? Is that considered in that 15 foot?
No, where my tire is, basically, to the...
So, how wide is that little dirt area?
That dirt area, I wanna say it's about another three to four foot, roughly.
Or than that.
It depends on what you're talking about.
Does that get paved right there?
Well, I think some of the issue is, is that the property next to it isn't owned by a landlord.
So, is that the dirt still on or the grass?
The dirt and the grass, I don't believe.
Okay, so it's just that, like, case...
Yeah, it's just basically kind of see what they get.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, the property line is like, yeah, yeah.
Have you talked to that property owner?
I don't know if the, our owner of the facility has yet. He had mentioned that he was going to, but...
I mean, that's not a whole, I mean, that's probably the, that old dirt area. Yeah, people rag there, isn't it?
Well, yeah.
And again, that would all be marked as a one-way, as a one-way sign, starting immediately.
I don't know. There's a search for utilities, five feet of which would be off into that dirt part.
Okay.
The, is it possible to pave that east, that five feet? Because that's your property line, side feet, yeah.
I guess I don't know, I'm not a property owner. I don't know that any...
Yeah, I think this is the dirt.
You do have the ability to allow, and to pay up to the property line, I think, any day. I mean, it's not an ideal situation, but it would improve over what you've got right now.
You're looking at about some three foot, two foot, maybe?
Maybe just longer, wider than that. About five feet, I think.
So, if we allow the five-foot portion of the easement that is on the property on their side, how do you feel about your recommendation for safety? Because earlier you said if you could get another five feet, that that would make it...
I mean, ideally, you'd want another five feet.
On top of the 15?
On top of what they've got, correct. And you can kind of see where that's where many people could go around it.
That's where they go.
That's what you're telling me. So, I can't tell exactly how far the property line is. I guess I could look at...
Physical residential and city limits are both at 10 feet.
Yours is 10.
Because I don't really know the size of that.
So, it's five on that side, you find on that side, see what's on?
Yeah, it's an extra. Yeah, it really is.
See that line?
Yeah.
So, it's five on both sides?
It's, it looks like you got almost five feet to the property line, according to this plan. You got another five feet. Well, yes, it's not an ideal situation, but it's, it's better. You, it would give you, you know, it'd give you two 10-foot lanes.
No, is that easier for...
No, just over the property lines.
Well, it's definitely like the left side, so that's, that's for...
I think that's on the other side of that, isn't it?
Ten inch wide utility, so both sides, but...
You actually go over the utility, but that's what's there.
They, they're over the utilities, probably down the road, but that's the easement, they pave it down here.
Oh, that's true. Do you think they'll go and pave over it, because they can take that up easily, they won't let you plant trees and go weeds all these ways?
That, is that an option that you could check in here as well?
It's an option we can check in, too, I guess. But I guess what I'd like, you know, know if that's just something that they're gonna do with the center pass, that I need to start building like yesterday. And then, also, I guess I can't let it go another month or two weeks or even a month.
Is that a personal goal to set this there? We, we have no desire to assign any...
Yeah.
We'd like to come to a resolution. I think we all agree to that.
You could make that a condition of approval, and definitely build up the building from it, but we'd certainly want to see that additional five-foot area before the C of all this issue. But it would hold up this building. Building's not gonna go on without a drive-through, so it would hold up that maybe.
One of the questions, the drive-through would build, was whether it was like, keep house, so the sidewalk would remain?
The sidewalk would remain. We would have to take a little section of sidewalk off at four forty, four hours, because the buildings there probably aren't gonna be able to live, you know, the whole, like, particular area to stick out there for the drive-through, so it would be there. But yeah, that would be one of the factors that I, the existing, everything else to stay existing where it goes to have, so. And realistically, in order to get to where I'm backed up cars-wise into that far more lane, I'd probably have to have 11 cars in my drive-through. And at that point, if I have 11 cars in my drive-through, I probably shouldn't be a business really able to serve the lot. I work right now, one of the busiest ones where I'm training at, in Zeeland, and if we had three cars in the drive-through at one time, that's a lot. And they have probably 82% of their business just in the drive-through. I don't want a lot of...
Just seem more unfortunate.
I actually was curious about that. I mean, we're, we're looking at this, at this entire area as one long continuous drive-through being used in much the same way. But in reality, cars should not be on the north side of the building for any more time it takes to drive from one side of the building to the other.
Correct.
There should not be a reason why the backup there to have to drive around them.
Correct.
It doesn't seem to be, it seems to me that the area where we need the passing, the extra lane, is from the corner of the building around, and there's plenty of it.
There's plenty of room there, correct. That's kind of the landlord, and I had booked that originally, when we kind of agreed our needs, and, you know, shouldn't get any issue, because we shouldn't even back up to this far. It's just strictly gonna be an access point.
I think the term is stacking space? How much stacking space do we have from the drive-through window? When you go around the curve, all, if you encompass all the area, it's actually on the wire, all the way.
Nine cars.
Nine cars.
But then, essentially, through the corner, nine cars.
What did you just say about nine cars?
There's nine cars before, any cars would be in that north lane behind the facility that would be waiting to place an order.
How many?
How many before the delivery area?
The delivery area, you would have, when you say before the delivery area, on the west side of the...
The loading dock, where they would actually be backing in.
Yes, they'd come around, they'd come around through far into the, so if the loading dock, they actually can still pull in and back up and park, even with my cars in the far end of the drive-through. There's enough room for that to happen. They can still pull up and back up to that point.
Do you think it could be three cars that could fit in there?
Easily, easily. From my drive-through window, where it's gonna, where my lane, or where my order window is, is right here.
Yeah.
There's three cars stacked to my window at that point. You can put another car here, two, I mean, it's gotta be four, five, six, seven, eight cars to get to this point.
And that should be highly unlikely.
That would be very unlikely. That would be extremely unlikely.
And it's the worst case scenario at that point, if someone's waiting to get to the loading dock, would have to wait for your cars to move out of the way and to the...
Yes, and all of my traffic is usually gone by 9:00 a.m., which most of those facilities now opens up after 9:00 a.m.
So, you're gonna have deliveries early?
Oh, no, I'm talking on my drive-through.
Your drive-through?
Yes.
Okay, so deliveries could come later and...
Yeah, they can come later, things like that. Actually, I don't see any reason that would be affected at all. Because really, that'd affect me as well, you know, and I'm gonna put a store there as well, all that. And I gotta get my deliveries there, just like everybody else does. So, it isn't everybody's best interest, it's just for picking up and calling.
Is that whole area where the antique store used to be, is that all for Biggie?
No, we only leased in a portion of that. We are, of course, in the 1,200 square feet, just adjacent to the laundromat, so we're gonna be, we're gonna rent out some laundromat. There's still 2,400 square feet that's available there, which we're actually looking to possibly do something there, also, in that facility as well, so.
And you said Jeff's, so man owns the...
He owns the facility, Paul does, yeah. I've met with him Friday a few times, I was one of his leads, he reads and everything. He was supposed to be here tonight, I'm, I'm actually surprised he didn't make it, but we just talked yesterday, so it's not much to go about. But he was, yeah, he was gonna basically, let you know that he's thinking the same thing on Biggie, that he wants to fill up this van with everybody else, so...
Anyone else that would like to speak in favor of public comment, anybody in favor that would like to speak in favor of the drive-through?
Hi, I'm Jeff Garza. I'm actually a co-owner, so I'm also a consumer and an early worker and a commuter, which is not a lot of people in this town are. I have to say, for me, I'm also lazy, and I don't wanna get out of my car. I'm gonna drive through, get my coffee, and go. Kind of addressed the problem of maybe 15 cars getting backed up and you'll be blocking this lane. I have to tell you, as a consumer, if I pull around that corner and I see five cars in that lane, I'm probably going around and leaving anyway. So, just kind of keep that in mind. You know, you had asked about the ability to get out of line if you got stuck. If you take a look at your McDonald's in Cedar Springs, you have a two-lane McDonald's with cars going in. And over the morning, I've been stuck in that inside lane going, gosh, I really don't wait in the line. And I can't get out of it. So, having the opportunity to get out of line is really important. I still don't think it would envision a huge backup, something like that, so you have with people, like, four around, and you can get your coffee, because they love it so much, or...
I don't drink coffee.
We actually...
I just, I know, no, I'm just, no, I'm just saying, I know how far McDonald's can get backed up in the morning with people going through and getting drinks there, and so I just envision there being a lineup of people wanting to go through at a certain particular time in the morning, that there will be more than three cars in line between, say, 6:30 and 7:30 in the morning.
But even mine, McDonald's serves for breakfast, and...
I know, but...
There's a lot more in there.
It's gonna be new, and people are gonna go, and you're gonna get a lineup.
That's tough, though.
Yes, I was, none of those businesses are open. The laundromat wasn't open until 8:00, and that's the earliest.
Right, so, I'm an early bird, and I came out of the town early, the 5:00 a.m. opening time, I think, we just found, I get my coffee, because doctor doesn't open, so he lets the rest of us serve.
I was there at 5:50 this morning, and...
Were they open?
Well, no, no, no. I'm talking about your establishment, where your company. I was there at 5:50 this morning, and it was pretty empty. And I anticipate it's gonna be less empty if there's, actually, your business is there. My point is, there's not a whole lot of competing traffic at that, at that time of the day My point is there's not a whole lot of competing traffic at that, at that time of the day in that particular area.
Yeah.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this special lane use?
I do have one more question. What times are you most busy with each other? Is it always in the mornings or is it half the afternoon?
Yeah, typically the busy times are, believe it or not, speaking from six AM until nine thirty, ten AM. Um, the moon comes up, so, um, usually picks up at about say three thirty, four o'clock. If you don't have any other work, I'm going to be there to get food and house.
So you can get like another afternoon rush?
Get a little afternoon rush, but I would say probably eighty percent of the business should happen before, uh, before that day. Because it's always going to be a five a.m. or a three p.m. schedule because it's always...
Here, I was in operation, it'll be five AM, it'll be PM. Seven days?
I'm sorry.
Seven days?
Seven days, yeah, yeah. Three hundred and sixteen, three days.
Wow.
And so the, um, clearly the extra five feet, is that something you only have to decide on?
Well, they would probably have, there are some decisions in the area, so however that's coming along, I'm happy.
Right, anyone that, uh, would like to speak against this, any, um, public? Seeing that, I'll entertain motion to close public hearing on the special I use to busy talking.
To make the question second.
Okay, Ryan?
Aye.
I oppose none. Okay. Public hearing is closed. Uh, I need a motion, please, to open the public hearing for our condominium subdivision at Prairie Run North. Go move. Okay, Ryan?
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, Mr. Rameckin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Should have another letter dated August twenty-second. This is your revised preliminary site condominium review for Prairie Run North, uh, which is a continuation of the single-family residential development in that area. This is, because they're doing it as a site condominium, it goes through, you make a recommendation to the city council, then it comes back for final site plan, uh, review. And, uh, so everything's pretty much detailed here. They're going to have thirty-three additional lots. They're actually going to be units, but they're going to look just like lots. It's a, you know, typical site condominium project. The lots range in size from sixty-nine hundred square feet to, uh, just over twelve thousand square feet. And nineteen of those lots look furnished on way, I mean, with the cul-de-sac. So the, really, the only key items that we have that are, um, identified in here, they've given you pretty complete plans. They're giving you building elevations to show what the houses will look like. We, you know, I know where I live, right around the corner, they're putting up, they have a development there. And, um, I had a chance to go look at the elevations and, you know, pretty much the same as what they're showing here. Um, it's a nice neighborhood. And, um, the only two items I have in here were, number one, a temporary turnaround is needed at the end of the proposed road on Pioneer Trail. Uh, we want to make sure that people aren't turning around in driveways, which actually happens in the development that I mentioned because the street ends there, um, and people turn around in the driveways. And if you're the last person living there, you don't really appreciate that. So I think we're going to need some kind of temporary turnaround there. Um, would still have to be hard surface, probably asphalt. And then the other item was the planting area for trees around the wagon wheel court cul-de-sac. It is kind of narrow and we think the sidewalk needs to be backed a little bit on the cul-de-sac to give them room to, to be able to do actual plantings in there, um, not to, to, and then if the trees die. And, um, the only other thing in this is it's being, the condo documents are being reviewed by the city attorney. And, um, but we don't anticipate any issues with that. So we are recommending approval, that you recommend approval, to city council and there's the conditions are, number one, installation of a temporary turnaround at the end of the proposed road, Pioneer Trail. Number two, the planting area for street trees around the wagon wheel court cul-de-sac be made wider by pushing the sidewalk back farther toward the building envelopes. Number three, review and approval of the condominium documents by the city attorney. And number four, review and approval of mother applicable departments and agencies. And once again, this will come back for final site plan approval, even though they've given you a lot of information, uh, probably more than you're, you typically get with a, uh, the preliminary review, but that's okay. It's just more for you to look at, anticipation of the final review.
Any questions for Mr. Rameckin?
I have one. Who wrote these bylaws?
They were written, the condo documents were written by the, yeah. And like I said, they are being reviewed by the city attorney. So if there, if any of you have comments that you want to pass on, then...
But this is about the, this, not, no, it's not grammar.
Really? There must be some grammar.
I just think there's a lot of things in here that if people are looking to buy, that is going to make it, I would never look there, would be its rules. I'd be doing all I can to get these changed, so.
Like, what do you...
What page is that on?
Nineteen.
All right, for example, let's go straight first for the firearms and weapons. No co-owner shall use or commit the use by any academy agent, tenant, and baby developer of any firearms, air rifles, pellet guns, BB guns, paintball guns, bows and arrows, illegal fireworks, or other dangerous weapons, projectiles, or devices. So basically, your kid can't have a BB gun or a paintball gun to practice in their backyard or, or play around in the neighborhood.
But the state of Michigan says you can.
So I have a problem with that. Then here's another one, for example. No satellite dish may be installed on any unit until the type, design, and location has been approved in writing by the review committee. Now, I know I just had Dish come out and put on a satellite and I, I don't want to have to go through a whole review committee to decide if I can have Dish. So in another one, no co-owner shall display, hang, or store any clothing, sheets, blankets, laundry, or any other articles of personal property outside of residence. So you can't have a clothesline. This is...
Actually, that's, believe it or not, that, I, that one in particular is pretty typical in most developments, yeah.
Just a question, why are they going towards condos where condos themselves, Cedar Springs?
Yeah.
Well, okay, if I, if I can answer that one, and then I, I'm not going to answer the, I mean, the, you buy into what, and maybe some of them wouldn't be appropriate for Cedar Springs. Well, like the other can answer that. I know where I live, that, I've got, I bought into some really restrictive covenants, but I bought into it. Um, but the, um, the reason that, in, in site condos, you rarely see any plats anymore, subdivisions. They're almost all site condominiums right now. And the reason, and it's been like that for decades. Um, and the reason is that, um, the way in the state of Michigan it's set up and you go through the planning process, once you go through the review process legally, it's to submit it for the, to the state for review. And it can take like a year to get them to review it. So what they did is, that's why they invented site condominiums, to be able to get around having to submit plats to the state. So I haven't reviewed a, a subdivision in probably at least fifteen years.
I just know where they're building.
Oops, just don't do my, but for, I'm sorry, for all appearances, when you're in a site condominium, it, it's the same thing. You sell your yard and you have, it's still the same. You maintain it. It's just like any other, it's just a, a different legal document for your ownership. Look, hey, shocked me when I moved to Michigan, I was like, I've never seen this before. What's a site condominium? Yeah. I think we might be the only state that has that. You'd think. You'd think.
Any questions for Mr. Rameckin? So then we'll, uh, open up public comments. Anybody, uh, that wants to speak, uh, in favor of, um, this project?
Bring a board and I'll set it on the ground here and let the others write to it. Place it somewhere. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rameckin. Uh, my name is Dan Larabel. I'm with Alan Edwin Holmes. I'm a project manager on the land development team. Alan Edwin is a, is primarily a home builder. We also develop, uh, property, uh, primarily in the west side of the state. Uh, we're here today, we're here Prairie Run North. The, uh, existing subdivision was, uh, built as a plat. The current proposal is as a site condominium. The, uh, I, I'd like to touch on the differences. There, there is, uh, as Mr. Rameckin referred to, there, there is no, uh, material difference. The, the streets are public, utilities are public, there's no open space. There's all the, the elements of a plat, uh, available, but the planning process is very cumbersome. It takes, uh, after construction, after, uh, a lot of investments made, there's a long review process that starts with about three months of, of county and municipality review. And then it goes to the state for another approximately three months just because of the backlog. So you're looking at a minimum of six a month, whereas a site condominium, you can, uh, you can develop and after everything's been approved, it can be recorded and split. And the ending result is the same. It's a piece simple, it's piece simple real estate. Uh, there, the only difference is that there's automatically an association, uh, created that is started by the developers, run by the developer, which is Alan Edwin Holmes, and then it's transitioned. Um, these are all, these are all, uh, boilerplate rules that are established by the state of Michigan. The, uh, the, since this association won't be collecting dues, uh, as there's all public entities, uh, as far as the streets, the utilities, just as the, the subdivisions to the south are, are all public streets, public utilities. Uh, there won't be an association charging any dues and there's no open space to maintain. So this association, um, it's, it probably will dissolve at the, at the point that the developer, uh, transitions out of the community. Unless there is a group of homeowners that wants to take over an architectural review committee and beginning, begin reviewing, um, satellite dishes, uh, BB gun restrictions, that's, that sort of thing. Whereas the rules that we put in force are, are essentially to protect our investment. And we are, we're basically, um, using what's the generally accepted, uh, bylaws from the state of Michigan, putting them in place into our community to protect our investment, to establish a community, say, this is our intent for the community, this is what you can expect as far as the home, what, what kind of activities will be going on. And then after the, the, the developer is, is out of the picture, the association can take that and do what they would like with it. So that's kind of, uh, an overview of the plat board versus, um, a site condo. And I can go on, I can go into further detail on either one of those aspects. Uh, I do want to touch on, uh, the, the fact that this is a previously approved site plan. This, this plan was approved in two thousand and six, I believe it was August two thousand and six. And, um, the, it did expire, we did make minor modifications to the lot width. The, the general lot width of the previous site plan was, would permit a, a type of home that would, would, uh, would have two-stall garage. And then what we, we refer to as a bump, is a six-foot bump outside of the garage. It, and it wouldn't, there weren't any flats that would fit that, but what's, uh, what's really desirable is three-car garages. We've altered the lot width so that it's a variation that for two-car minimum, then you can have, you can have two-car, a bump, or a third-stall garage. So there's a, there's a, there's going to be variation in the, in the elevations. Um, that's really the only change in the site plan is the lot width. Um, we are adding a temporary turnaround. It's on, it is on a site plan. It'll be a paved, uh, it'll be a paved temporary turnaround. And I do want to hit on, uh, Mr. Rameckin's point. Uh, we, we don't develop, we haven't developed anything on the west side, east side of the state where, where he's, uh, referring to. And, uh, if I'm referring to the right self, it's, um, it was, it was a, a previous developer works, works, uh, solely a home builder in the community. But I do thank you for the compliment. Uh, the, uh, the, it's thirty-three units. The, um, uh, the, another element I want to hit on is the detention basin. The detention basin was, uh, previously designed, previously approved. It's, uh, designed to hold, uh, twenty-four hours of stormwater, uh, discharged from the site and slowly release it into the existing storm, storm sewer system. If there's any further questions on that, you have, uh, an engineer from Dean's Sewer Association. I'm, I'm more of a project manager. Uh, once it gets, gets into the nitty-gritty details, he's probably, um, more equipped to handle the questions.
Who maintains that?
The, it, it would be a, a public entity. The, during the development and construction and, and under the construction of the homes, uh, the developer would be responsible to maintain any, any runoff, any maintenance. Uh, after the, the, uh, construction of the home and essentially the whole site stabilized, there's really, uh, there's very little maintenance that would go into the, the basin. The, uh, and that's, and we would actually maintain the basin. We would remove the sediment, we'd make sure everything's operating as it needs to be. Uh, and then after that, after it's stabilized, the basin should operate as it needs to with little maintenance. And with whatever little maintenance there is needed, uh, say a, a piece of drain pad needs to be replaced, um, the city has the authority, eh, to, to, you know, to do this work. And then they would, they, as far as the financial aspect, they would assess the property owners in, in the community all equally for that work on their, on their tax bill. Um, it's, this is all, that's also something that's in the master deed, reporting to property, all properties. Um, so again, I didn't go into further detail on that. As far as the review of this, the plan, um, the, I'd also, yeah, we, we will be revising the cul-de-sac layout to provide more green space to the sidewalk, whether it's adjusting the right-of-way line or just pushing the sidewalks outside of, um, inside of the units and putting an easement, putting the sidewalk within an easement. Uh, the engineer review can bring up any concerns. Uh, there, there's, um, they'll go, we'll go through another final review process at PCNH, uh, during construction plan review. But today, what we're, uh, what we're, um, hoping for is to have our layout approved, the, the concept approved, so that we can carry on with our construction process if it is approved. And that means, uh, investing money into, to plan profile sheets, uh, you know, more detailed construction plans. And then submitting for more reviews with the, with the city engineer, the city planner, uh, and going on to the state of Michigan review for water and sewers for minutes. And this is all, uh, three to four-month process with the hopes of beginning construction in early twenty seventeen with, uh, completion of middle of twenty seventeen. And after everything, on the development end is approved, we would go quickly into, uh, constructing, constructing homes.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. So how are the homes going to be built? Are they all going to just be built or are they going to be built in phases?
Uh, as far as the home construction, we have two different types, uh, that we offer. We have a, a pre-sold process. And this is where somebody, uh, that wants to build their dream home, uh, with all developing missiles. And so they, they can pick their core plan, they can pick all the granite couches, the graffiti cabinets, the brick and stone, uh, they can pick it all. And, um, and then we go, we go into the building process after everything's finalized and funded. The other process that we, that we offer is a speculative and we'll be building, um, we go for sixty percent pre-sold and forty percent speculative. And it's just a, a way to get, uh, activity where if somebody looking for a new, a home and, and hasn't even considered a new home, if there's a completed home on the market they could move into, that is, that's the, the market we're going for, the speculative home basis.
So forty percent of the homes will be built and then sixty percent are...
Uh, essentially, uh, I would envision this would be a runway of two and a half to three years. This is kind of how we look at it, of homes, and that's barring, you know, given, given economic conditions.
So potentially it could take six years if people aren't buying or eight years if people aren't buying.
Correct.
Okay, I have another question. Is there any common area of property anywhere pro, is all...
The, there's not. The only common, common area would be the roadways which are public versus private.
Okay, so you're operating under the fact that this is a condo to make it easier to build with the intention of it being dissolved once all the homes are built?
The, that is likely what could happen, correct. And it's a site condominium, it's a single-family site condominium. Would this incorporate into the remaining Prairie Run association?
They don't have an association. The Pines has an association, Prairie Run does not, and then this one does, but doesn't.
Just part of the conversation, um, after it's completed, they will still be guided by, they'll still be bound by the master deed, you know, condo documents, master deed bylaws. Um, they may not have an association... They may not have an association, they may not be actively doing some of the duties or identifying, but the kind of documents are always in place, so if there was ever the need to remedy some situation, the kind of documents is then, they're up there to remedy that, that situation. They don't, they don't disappear, they just, the level of activity of the people who live there will be changed, that's all.
But who, who does that? Who makes sure that those things are correct?
Is it the city? Generally, it'd be the city, you'd be the city that, like, really, the only issue's going to be the stormwater system. Everything else in, in anything in the public right wing, like, you know, that, it would be under public realm. Now, the, you know, the city already fixes lights and puts, replaces light bulbs, you know, within the public right wing, you just do that. But the, the one you need to think here is the stormwater system, because you're not, the city doesn't generally go into a development thing, or repair the stormwater, the detention basin. And that, like, what Dan said, that would be charged back to the condos, and that would be provided by the master deed. Most everything else is going to fall under the city's purview and just fit into everything else. The lighting too will be owned by the children.
Oh, what if?
They may own the lights instead. The, the.
Then being dense. So if someone had illegal fireworks, and there was a problem, who takes care of that?
If it was a repeated issue, I would imagine it's just like anywhere else in the city, police department, or fire department, or whatever.
You know, all the, all the rules that they've got, I'm wondering who forces.
Well, if there's an actual association, the person who's head of the association, which would be the builder at that time, until it's dissolved, but then once it's dissolved, these rules still stay in effect? The bylaws? But then there's nobody enforcing them? But they're enforceable, so if somebody could say, hey, these bylaws are here, I want them enforced?
Right, but at that point in time, the only thing the city can enforce, our city laws, or, or city law, that then becomes a private issue between, like, if there's something somebody's doing that's not, it's in the bylaws, and the developer's out of the question, you're out of the picture, and somebody's doing something that they don't like, and they're, they would have to take that private, it'd be a private issue, they'd have to go to court separately on their own with that, but it wouldn't impact the city.
But we have an act of creation.
That wouldn't affect the city, but only if that, private property.
It's just a curiosity question.
If it works. If I go a little further with that, okay, so I buy a house there, I saw a house there, the person buying it, do they get required to file these guidelines two years down the road when I'm selling themselves buildings?
Correct, and.
And then, is that part of, like, the deed and everything else that they're purchasing this house? They have to follow this, even though it's not.